Okay, it's five, 4:30, so we'll get started for the Reno County Board of Zoning Appeals meeting of July 20th. Would you call the roll, please, Mark?
Schurfeiger.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Shaffer.
Here.
Deltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Martin, here? Yes, I'm here.
And Gerson.
Okay. Russ is gone tonight, so you stuck with me. Welcome, everybody. You've been set the minutes from the last June 15th meeting. Are there any corrections, additions?
No, I move correct as submitted.
Okay.
There.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. All right. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the Board of Zoning Appeals in an orderly manner, the BZA will follow the fact-finding procedures which is outlined in the handbook on the chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. All decisions by the BZA are final. Decisions may be appealed to the District Court within 30 days of the decision. If a decision is made tonight, that decision will be based upon the record of information presented to the BZA. I'll now formally open case number. Have any of the BZA members have any outside contact regarding this case?
No.
No.
Okay. Do any BZA members have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
No.
Okay. Will the applicant, please, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the chairman. BZA members may request clarification at the end of your presentation or have questions.
All right. Adam Clark, 309 West 75th, Kansas, 67502. Built the, had Erickson Construction build the shop for me 10-plus years ago, and my intention was to put a bathroom and shower kitchen kind of in the back of that, kind of have a man cave back there. But I kind of collected some different things over the years. I have a smaller pontoon boat and a Mustang and jet ski, stuff like that, and just kind of got some different things in there. So we had the idea to go ahead and add on to the side because we, I coach high school basketball, and so I've been doing that for 29 years. I know there's a concern about roofing. I am, I take care of all Ray &amp; Sons Roofing. My grandpa started a company back in 1939, and I do all the residential stuff for them. I am licensed as an individual also, just if I ever help out any of my friends or something like that, I can, I'm licensed through myself, and anything that I do personally doesn't, I don't want to run through Ray &amp; Sons. And so, you know, that's kind of how we've always set it up. My grandpa was there, and we've always kind of had it that way. And so there wasn't, there wasn't any kind of concern. I've had the shop for, like I said, 10 years. I've never stored any roofing materials there. We have a big shop at 229 East 3rd that we have a big lot, all materials stored there in the building. And then we also have a building across from Dylan's Warehouse out on East 4th, and that we store stuff in. I've never used my shop for anything work-related, and nor do I ever intend to use it for anything work-related. That's, I got plenty of room at our facilities for that. But, so we had intention of wanting to put the man cave in the back of the shop, but just room and everything like that, so we moved, we decided to go on to the side, and I hired a guy to do that. When I hired Erickson's originally to do the shop, he took care of everything. So then when I got ahold of a plumber to see about putting in the bathroom and stuff, and that's when we found out there was no permit pulled. So that was Erickson, like I said, when I had him hired, he took care of all that, and so I didn't, I didn't worry about it. When I do work for individuals, I buy all permits and everything like that. And that's when I found out we didn't have a permit, and that's when I got to know Mark and spent some time with him and going through the process, and so it helped me kind of learn a lot as far as that's concerned. So the intention is to have the man cave, and that's what it is. It's going to be a small bathroom, possibly shower in the back, and then the rest of it's just wide open, pool table, ping pong table. Like I said, kids are in high school, so we host, we host a lot of stuff with kids either through school or church or whatever it might be, just get-togethers. And a lot of the neighborhood kids come over, I have a basketball court at my house, and allows them to come over, and I just tell their parents, just hey, they come over, shoot anytime, you know, I'm not going to be responsible for any accidents, stuff like that. And I said, as long as they're picking up after themselves, not tearing stuff up, I'm great with kids coming over and using that. That's what it's for. It's for kids, is to come over, it's right there on the cul-de-sac, and it's, it's an excellent opportunity for them just to kind of spend some time there, a safe area, and parents, you know, you just get to know a lot of the different families and stuff through that. So it's, it's great, so I enjoy it. And that's the intention of having the man cave, is just, just having an opportunity really for me to spend time with, with, you know, my boys and their friends and stuff like that. And we didn't, you know, that's, like I said, it was originally for the back of the shop, but it just kind of got full with stuff. Never stored any roofing materials there. You're welcome to come over anytime and check, so it's, I don't know if there really had much more.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the BZA members have any questions to ask of the applicant?
This, this picture here, is that a, that concrete wall, is that?
That's where the man cave is going to go, yes.
Okay, is that intended to be a foundation, or is that a wall?
It's a, it's a stem wall. That way, then we come in and we pour the pad on the inside of it, and just because it slopes down so much, we have to fill it with dirt, so we'll go ahead and fill all that with dirt in there and just get it raised up, and then we'll put sand on top of it, and that's when the concrete-
So the top of this wall right here is the same as the floor in this building?
Correct. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's about a three-foot outside the dirt that is exposed of stem wall.
Any other questions? All right, Mark, you want to give us the staff report?
Mark Von Atchon, county planner. So as you've heard, this is a request to construct a 24-by-34 residential building addition. To help orient you, you're looking at the north side of Blue Screws subdivision, which is on North Monroe Street, highlighted in purple on the street. This parcel is less than two acres in size, and so the applicant is going to be limited to 2,000 square feet of accessory buildings without going through a special exception process. Back in 2012, as you'd heard, Mr. Clark applied for and received permission to construct a 40-by-60 building. At that time, in 2012, we did not have that type of restriction, so a person can come in and build any size shop building on any size parcel they wanted to, so long as that they can meet our setback requirements and our zoning regulations that would govern, say, commercial and industrial land uses. Mr. Clark applied for that permit. He complied with our setbacks at that time, and so he was issued a permit for that building. Therefore, right now, that per, that building is grandfathered in because now in 2016, our regulations changed to have that limitation. So we're not really discussing too much about his existing 40-by-60 building, but that addition that he wants to build, now that addition coupled with his 40-by-60 building throws him above the 2,000-square-foot limit, and so therefore, that's why we are here tonight, is to really consider, should he be permitted to exceed that 2,000-square-foot limit further, and allow him to build that 24-by-34-foot residential addition here. The total square footage of that building, if approved, would be 3,216 feet. The building may only be used for residential purposes or agricultural purposes, but more than likely, in this case, residential purposes. Other land uses of that building will require what we call a conditional use permit. That conditional use permit could be for any type of, say, commercial activity, industrial activity, like even a recreational type of activity. So if the building is going to be used for residential purposes, you can certainly consider that tonight. If it would be revealed that it's going to be for commercial purposes, then it would require a conditional use permit. You did hear testimony tonight from Mr. Clark that, you know, he thinks he's going to use that for residential purposes. The applicant has clarified that, you know, tonight with us, and so in reviewing this case, I have no reason to suspect that there's going to be any type of commercial activity going in, you know, on there. You've heard testimony again that he's going to be using that for recreational purposes, for his own personal use, the man cave, if you will, having various pool tables, ping pong tables, what have you, in there. And so staff recommends approval of this request. I have attached three conditions of approval. Number one is the approval is not to exceed 24-by-34-foot addition, which is only 816 square feet more than what he has right now. That the accessory building shall only be used for non-commercial, non-industrial purposes without an approved conditional use permit. And then the accessory building shall not be used as a single-family dwelling except as authorized by these regulations. You really have two options. You know, I think with this, you know, you can approve of this as submitted. If you have concerns about that, you know, you can certainly table it, but I don't, I don't inherit his testimony, have really any concern that there's going to be commercial activities involved with this building. I think there are adequate safeguards in place to help protect against that. You know, we've got me being out there inspecting it potentially. Other people in the neighborhood could call in if they suspect something like that, and so I don't, I don't believe that, you know, you would need to table this for really any reason and make him go through any kind of conditional use permit or anything like that. But what I would like to do for the record, though, is kind of read you some of our definitions in the book. Because our regulations are set such that we, we do allow some home occupation-type commercial activities. You know, you could certainly, you know, be an accountant, you can be a bookkeeper, you could keep the books of any type of corporation inside your house, so long as, you know, you're not storing heavy industrial equipment there or any, or having employees come, you know, to the house to either pick up materials and then leave, or do other types of activities that may, may disrupt the neighborhood. And so, couple of definitions here. Definition of a guest house. A guest house is living quarters within a detached accessory building located on the same premises with the main building for use by temporary guests of the occupants of the premises, such quarters having no kitchen facilities or separate utilities, and not rented or otherwise used as a separate dwelling. To me, that would be a bigger concern if this addition turns into like another type of dwelling where it can be rented out to other people here. The other definition I call your attention would be the definition of a home occupation. And a home occupation is listed as any occupation or activity which is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the premises for dwelling. For the purposes of these regulations, a daycare home, as defined herein, shall be considered a home occupation. So with that definition, you know, we do allow people to do home occupations out of their, their home without a conditional use permit. So then you ask, well, what is a, a home occupation? If you go into Article 15, we have a listing of criteria that would constitute a, a home occupation. Some examples of home occupations would be, like I said before, an accountant or an architect. It could be an attorney, for example. You could be an insurance agent, a photographer, a physician, or in my favor, you could be a planner. You could be a planner inside your, your own home occupation. Some of the key, key things I think you need to keep in mind with home occupations. The home occupation shall be carried out wholly within a main building or structure or within a permitted accessory building or structure, provided that the primary use of the main building or structure is clearly the dwelling, and it's used by the person as his or private residence. The other person is that no person other than members of the household living on the premise and one other outside person shall be employed. So you could have a situation where you could have a home occupation, as I listed above, and then you could actually have a person that does not live on that property come to the house and work with you as part of that home occupation. Anything greater than that would require a, a conditional use permit. There's other criteria in here, talking about signage and outside storage. You can't store materials outside of the property with your home occupation. But that's what I just wanted to kind of bring to your attention, some of the rules that because we do allow certain commercial activities as a home occupation, even if it rises above that, goes to our conditional use permit level. We'll run through some slides here in case you haven't been out to the property or looked at it. It's kind of hard to see. This is the slide plan. You do have a copy of this in your, in your packet. It's not showing up too well on the screen, but his addition is going to be on the east side of the existing building. This is again another, this is a picture of the subdivision plan. Again, I apologize, it's not showing up too well on the screen, but on, on the north side, what I would draw your attention to is, is on 75th Avenue, there is what we call a temporary cul-de-sac. That temporary cul-de-sac is put in place so emergency vehicles or people that are driving that road, down that road can actually turn around, and that temporary cul-de-sac should remain free and clear of, of obstructions because it actually is for, for the public to be able to turn around. It is on his property, but it is meant for the public to be able to use that, so they don't have to back all the way back down 75th, 5th Avenue. And I'll have some better pictures of that. This, as you can see, and I think this is what Mr. Macklin was referring to, this is a picture of his addition right now. It was currently under construction. I did find out about that from somebody, and so as Mr. Clark mentioned, I had sent him a, a letter informing him of the permitting requirements and the need for a special exception. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, he stopped construction on that, and that's the way it looks, you know, right now, but it was being constructed without a permit. This is an overhead shot of the entire area. Again, 75th Avenue is the road that is running east and west. It does not go all the way through to Monroe, and so you can kind of see in that picture the cul-de-sac that is used for emergency vehicles and whatnot to be able to turn around. With a closer picture of the property here, the shed is, is right there at the edge of the cul-de-sac. You can see the addition would be going to the east or on the right side of that building. This is actually a, a picture. It's a very old picture, but it's what I have from, from Google. It's taken from 2007, but I, it's pretty much the same. You don't see the building there because it's obviously built after the picture was taken, but that would be the location of the, of the building right there, and you can see the, the cul-de-sac, and you see it's all, all paved. Again, taken in 2007, this is going to be looking to the west toward what would be Monroe Street. And this is another one from 2007. This is on the north side of, of 75th Avenue, excuse me. It's a pasture field, if you will, big open agricultural field. And then lastly, this is looking back to the east down, down 75th Avenue. Houses are just on the south side, vacant field on the, the north side. So that would conclude my presentation. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Some questions?
Okay. Mark, I have, I have two questions. This is the second recent case we've had where the district has already started on the project, and I'm just wondering at how or where the county posts some notice that permits are required in certain parts of the county. I have to be completely honest and say, I think before I got on, on this body, I may not have thought about it either. So is it posted somewhere, or is it periodically communicated, or?
I mean, it's, it's on the website, what areas are zoned and what areas aren't, so we don't actively send notices to, to the general public saying, hey, permits are required. We currently don't have signs on a lot of our major entryways in the county that says that Reno County is zoned and permits are required. And a lot of that, I think a lot of the confusion is that we have certain areas of the county that are unzoned, that don't require permits, and then certain areas of the county are, are zoned that do, do require permits. I would say that the majority of the county has been zoned since the, the late 80s to the early 90s, and so really, people should be realizing that permits are, are required here. You know, the last area that we zoned was back in, I believe, it was 2020, when we zoned the southeast part of the, of the county down there and filled in a hole, if you will, down there. But there might be some things we could do, a better job of, is trying to, you know, get, get the information out there to the public that, yeah, we do need to have permits for, for buildings, but I think you heard, you know, from Mr. Clark, you know, it was a mistake because he, he pulled a permit in, in 2012, and he relied on a contractor to pull that permit and didn't realize he didn't do that, so.
My, my other question would be, if there were to be non-residential activity happening here, how does that play out? I mean, what, what happens?
If it's determined that it's above the home occupation level?
Yeah.
Then what would happen? I would first probably try and reach out to Mr. Clark, since, you know, we have, you know, a relationship here with this, and inform him of the concerns that have been brought to my attention, and, you know, ask him, you know, his opinion of what's going on. Short of that, you know, to ask how it play out, typically a violation letter is written stating what my concerns are and what, what I believe are the zoning violations, and the applicant has an opportunity to respond to that. What he would do then, if I'm mistaken, then we would just dismiss the violation. If I believe I'm right, then he would need to apply for a conditional use permit, and we would have another hearing in front of the Planning Commission to be able to possibly allow him to do whatever commercial activities he wants to do, whether it's storage of roofing materials or increasing the number of employees that would come to, you know, his, you know, his home to be able to pick up work trucks, you know, whatever it may be, whatever the violation, whatever it would entail, that's what we would have the hearing on. Again, we would send notices to the current property owners within 1,000 feet of that property, and we would go through that hearing process. The Planning Commission would make a recommendation on that case, and then that recommendation goes forward to the Board of County Commissioners for a final decision. So, and then you-
Kind of a follow-up to Garth's first question. I mean, do, you know, the issue of, of unpermitted construction, I guess we'd say, you know, pops up every now and then, and generally, it involves some type of a trade contractor, whether it's construction, electrical plumbing, whatever, roofing. Do we ever, on a periodic basis, annually, do every two or three years send out information on permitting to the various trades that are, you know, working in the county?
No, we have never, we have never tried to do, do something, you know, like that. But like I say, you know, mentioned to Garth, yeah, I mean, that's something that we could potentially draft some type of form letter and, and send it out to contractors.
We have something on our website, you know, is a building permit required, question mark, here, that shows the criteria, you know, something like that.
I have a question for you, Mark, and I may have misunderstood something you said earlier. The original building that was built there, that this is now, intended to be an attachment to, was it a permit required for it?
Yes, it was. It was required, and it was obtained by Mr. Clark back in 2012, and so, yeah, so he got a permit for that. He built it, and it's fine. 2016, the regulations changed, so when that change happened, that essentially grandfathered that building in because it's over 2,000 square foot, and so we're not going to make him tear it down or do some adjustment because the regulation changed. It was done before that regulation changed, so it's allowed to be there. But whenever you expand it, you know, you've got to come into compliance with, with the regulations. If he had 2.3 acres, if he had over that two-acre minimum, for example, we wouldn't be here tonight because when you have over two acres, you're allowed to have 5,000 square feet of accessory space, and so, you know, he lacked a little bit of land to be able to, to just get a permit from me, and we wouldn't be here tonight.
Okay, a follow-up question to that. The, the original permit for that original building, that was obtained by Mr. Clark or by a contractor?
It was Mr. Clark, yeah.
So kind of a segue there to a question I had. So if you have a homeowner that hires a contractor, is the ultimate responsibility to obtain the permit and ensure it's conforming still the landowner's responsibility, or does the contractor have a role?
Yes, the landlord. Yes, the landlord is ultimately responsible for conformance with the regulations with his property. The violation letter goes to, you know, Mr. Clark, it didn't go to his contractor. Now, you know, if Mr. Clark wants to involve his contractor and say, hey, why didn't you get a, a permit, that's between him and his, his contractor, but my violation letter goes to the homeowner. It's ultimately his responsibility because it's his property.
So if the contractor wants to roll the dice and not, you know, there's no consequences for them?
No, nope. We didn't, you know, I mean, we have building code situations, you know, some communities could pull their license and they wouldn't be able to do work in that community, but we don't have building codes and we don't go, we don't go down there, that road. Yeah. Thanks.
What is the size of Mr. Clark's property there in terms of acres?
Uh, I didn't, let's see, I didn't, I didn't provide you the acreage in here. He owns two lots within Blue Screws, and I know when I calculated that out, it was less than two acres. I didn't provide the acreage. Usually when you're in a planted subdivision, I just provide the, the lot and block, but before I obviously requested he apply for a special exception, that is what was calculated out, it was, it was less than two acres.
You see a 1.01 acres listed in your memo-
Did I?
-on the subject, yeah.
Okay.
Is that both lots, I assume?
Yeah, that would be, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yeah, I did, I did, usually I don't, but yeah, I guess I did this time. Yeah, you're right. My apologies. Yeah, that was 1.1. Under the subject line, the first sentence, it says approximately 1.01.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case, you have five minutes to comment. Please come forward to the podium one at a time and state your name and address for the record before commenting. Audience members are only permitted to address the BZA from the podium. Audience members are permitted only one time at the podium. In the interest of time, if you agree with comments previously made by audience members, please don't repeat the comments, similarly state that you agree with the previous comments, and then present new information to the BZA. Statements and questions should only be directed to the BZA, not the applicant or staff. The BZA may choose not to answer questions or engage with the public. Questions regarding the application can be asked to the BZA and answered by the applicant or staff during the rebuttal phase of this hearing. So does anybody want to come forward and say anything? This is your time.
Charles Westphal, 113 West 75th Avenue, Hutchinson. My home is approximately 910 feet east of the area we're talking about. I did send an email letter to Mr. Van Atchon. I don't know whether that gets distributed. I don't know whether that gets distributed. So I don't need to repeat myself since you've seen that. My main concerns, first of all, it was about becoming a business office, and that's been addressed, and I believe him because I'm not down that area very often, but I have not seen any roofing materials outside. The common road to get to 75th Avenue is about 80 feet from my house to the west. It's in between our two houses, and I've not seen heavy trucks go down there. So I, it was a concern, but I believe what he said earlier. If I'm repeating myself, I'm sorry, the size, the cul-de-sac is part of that too. I'm sorry, with 1.1 acres, and that cul-de-sac takes up probably a good 20% of that particular lot. And I used to be on the Blue Spruce Board. I've been there for 26 years, and I used to be on the Blue Spruce Board as an area rep and secretary. And that was in the late 90s, early 2000s, and one of the complaints that was quite common was drainage. The south end can get flooded a little bit if we ever have a rain, and the area of Blue Spruce that was notified of this only covers about the northern third, which is higher, and doesn't have drainage issues for the most part. And the only way to get to that lot is through the area of the people that weren't notified because of the surrounding area. So it concerns me just a little bit, but also many of the culverts, I say many, I know at least two culverts up there. The township told me about 10 years ago they didn't have the money to do replacements. And the culvert that goes from the ditch on the north side of 75th Avenue at Holly Way has been collapsed for 10 years, and I have pictures of proof if anybody wants to see it. But anyway, I think drainage should be a concern. And the other thing is, if this is allowed for this area, it concerns me that anybody thinks they could start a project and then get it permitted and put in a building wherever they want in the Blue Spruce neighborhood. But it's, I'm concerned about that. Well, he did it, I can do it. So other than that, I have no problems with the neighbor. Really didn't know him, and I understand what he'd like, but I don't know if I can 100% agree with it. I guess I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else?
My name is Patricia Lutkin. I own the quarter section of agriculturally zoned land to the north of Blue Spruce, so this is an immediate neighbor to my land. I'm here to support my neighbors who are objecting to this exception. It would be a dangerous precedent, in my opinion. Something happened in 2016 when this board changed your regulations to limit the size on smaller acreage. And I second what Mr. Westphal has said about if he can do it, why can't someone else start a project unpermitted and hope it slips by and change, be in violation of your regulations? So I oppose the exception being granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to talk to this issue?
Yes, my name is Michael Ward Holt, and I live Madison Avenue, right directly southeast of Mr. Clark. And I see no reason not to let him have this exception. It's in between his house and the building. There's nothing in there to prevent drainage. He's a very good conscientious neighbor who thinks about the kids, lets them come in and use his basketball goal. That's a nice area for kids to play and practice basketball. I would say, right, he's already got the footing. It'd be a waste not to use it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, does the applicant wish to rebut any statements made?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I think the biggest concern was me starting the project prior to getting the permit and the concern for going forward if someone else does that, and that would be a concern of mine also. I guess if I was in your guys' shoes, you know, you think about that. That's something that I should have paid closer attention to. I think my situation's a little more unique because of where I'm located in Blue Spruce, out there on the cul-de-sac. And when I first bought the, I didn't realize how far the, how much of that cul-de-sac that I actually owned when we had it all zoned and everything, and to see about that building, and I had to be back so many feet, and so that was, I just realized, I was like, man, that thing's huge out there. And so it's like part of the court is on that, but having a concern with that, I can see that, and it's a legit reason you'd be afraid someone else would start a project. And, but, you know, that's something that, like I said, I've just kind of got underway, and I thought Noah was taking care of that, and it wasn't anything that was intentional as far as, I'm going to try to sneak this by. Obviously, it's not something that's going to get snuck by anybody. It's not that. So, you know, I understand the concerns, but, you know, I just, I, you know, asked you guys, just let me to continue the process. I think that's about it. Anyone?
Thank you. All right, does staff wish to rebut any statements made?
No, Mr. Chairman. Nice, Chairman, I don't have any further statements.
Okay.
The board has further questions than me.
Any?
I have a question, probably a hypothetical question to address to you, Mark, is as I understand the facility there, if 20 years from now somebody else owns the property, it's kind of an ideal location to start a business. How does that happen? How do you, how do you make sure that that doesn't happen?
You would hope that that person that would be looking at purchasing that property and wanting to start a business would come and talk to me first, but I think short of that, I think there's several different possibilities that could happen. Number one, the neighbor is going to be aware, and if there's something going on, they will probably contact me. Secondly, this is a sewer district, and so we have a gentleman that maintains that sewer district. He would probably notice something and bring that to my attention, so there's that oversight here, and I've caught some other things that way. Third, though, and probably more importantly, is the county appraiser's office. That's how I get really a lot of my violations, just through them. They're out and about, they see something going on, they come back and they check their records, and they don't have a permit on file, so they will ask me, and I'll say yes or no, and so that will start that process. And so if they see something going on, whether it's a roofing company or what have you, eventually you'll get caught.
You've answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. The public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of a special exception must be based on the public hearing record of information and in its opinion, as a matter of fact, such special exception will not adversely affect the uses of adjacent neighboring properties. This is the time for the BZA to discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff Any further discussion? The chairman will entertain a motion on this case.
Mr. Chairman, I move case number 2023-06, the request for Van and Clark requesting a special exception for the Reno County zoning regulations to prevent the total square footage of an accessory building on the partial to exceed 2,000 square feet, limited in the R3 single-family residential district at 309 West 75th Avenue, be approved, allowing a building addition of 24, 34 feet in size for a total of 2,316 square feet of accessory building square footage, as requested in the application and subject to the conditions listed under, based above, under the reasons stated in the staff report and as heard at this public hearing.
Thank you. A second?
A second. That was the correction of the square footage allowance. I think Charlie said 2,300. It's actually 3,216 square feet.
Okay, Mark, would you call the roll, please?
Shortfeger?
Yes.
Strahan?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
I appreciate you addressing the business concern there.
If you all want to leave, we've got more stuff we've got to do, so we appreciate it.
Backside, you got? The BZA.
Is there any other business before the BZA? All right, then. Meeting is adjourned.
Do we need a motion? I'll move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed and want to drag the meeting up?
Who seconded it?
All right.
Don't get old.
It's unavoidable, unfortunately.
Okay, we'll now call the Reno County Planning Commission meeting for July 20th, 2023, to order. Mark, would you call the roll?
Shortfeger?
Here.
Strahan?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Here.
Macklin?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Minutes have been sent to you. Any additions, corrections?
I move to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Have to read this for the television audience?
Well, I think we need to have a little bit of a discussion. I don't, I don't see the applicant present here, and so I don't know what to tell the board, really. We can take a break. I could contact him.
I think the surveyor's truck, if I remember the name right, was in the parking lot when I came.
It's not Alpha, it's somebody else. You saw it?
I think Alpha was here. I think I saw him leave.
You see Abbott or so?
I don't remember what name was on the truck. It was just a surveyor.
The survey company is Chad Abbott, so.
I think it was Alpha that was here.
Yeah, I think they were here. I don't think there's anybody else. Yeah, we'll take a break and let Mark try to contact him.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to just take a five-minute break? How long you want to go? I mean, give them a time.
Yeah.
5:15 right now?
Five.
Okay. So take a break to 5:20?
All right.
He is about 15 minutes away, actually, lucky for us, and so if this board would like to wait, we can wait that time until he gets here, or we could adjust the agenda and we could begin talking a little bit about solar. It's board's prerogative. I would expect him to be here probably in the next 10 minutes.
Okay. Why don't we get into the solar stuff?
I move that we table it for 15 minutes.
20 minutes.
20 minutes.
We'll add.
You say?
All right, so I move that we table case number 2023-04 until 5:40.
Okay. Hold a favor. Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, board, regarding the solar regs, you received in the mail and by email changes that we had discussed but not necessarily approved last week. It was mainly based off of Mr. Seltzer's comments that he provided to the board last month. Start going through some of those. I added, if you're a really good reader, some of them I didn't add because I had questions on it myself, so I didn't add it yet. So that's what you received in the mail. What's in front of you tonight is since I mailed that pack of both by email and snail mail is Mr. Britton and myself has gone through the document again and made really some minor adjustments here. What we did is mainly looked at the words should, shall, and must and adjusted what we thought was accordingly with the document. So I would like to really just refer to that document instead of the document that you received in the mail. It's pretty much the same thing, except you're going to have some shoulds and shalls be highlighted instead. Also on your table is Mr. Seltzer's also provided some additional comments regarding the regulations, but I think we ought to go through what we have as changes first and then kind of proceed on from there when we have additional time here to look at. So if you look at what would be, I think there's paperclips on your desk, we can start I didn't have any changes on page 251 or 252.
We're just going to discuss the changes that you have made to the original draft.
We're going to discuss. You had given my understanding some good feedback. I took that feedback from our discussion last, but then I tried to incorporate the wording that you wanted in the regulations. May not be the exact wording, but we're here to kind of look at that. Yeah, I got what you were trying to say. I tried to make it legally or something, yeah, for lack of a better term. So the first topic that I want to discuss is probably page 253. It's at the top of that is number two, and then the letter B, it talks about a parcel of land operating a solar energy system and the 5% increase. On looking at that again and kind of thinking about how that would be implemented and applied to certain projects, I think it needs to be probably adjusted and said a different way. If you look at it, it'd be very difficult for a company to potentially increase their number of panels on a property without going back through the conditional use permit process, and I think there's merit maybe to go back through that process, but yet there's also, what I would say is probably overkill in doing something. And the best way I can explain is if you have a parcel of land and you have a site plan that is going to show you X amount of solar panels on that parcel of land, technology may change in the future where you can get bigger panels or smaller ones that have more density in there, but the same footprint. And that condition that we have in 2B is not necessarily allowing that, so I think we're not necessarily accommodating potential changes in technology. And so we want to keep the same footprint, but if something happens with technology that allows them to say get more units in the same footprint, then I think we should probably be initially allowing something like that. Does that make sense that way? So if you look at a parcel or if you look at a tabletop, for example, and that tabletop will allow 100 panels under that conditional use permit, technology changes and stuff such that maybe they can put now 200 on there for whatever reason, should that be something that should be allowed without going back through the same process? The people that would get a notice from us and look at their site plan, they would see that, okay, I can expect to see solar panels in this area on a parcel. Is that a big concern if the density changes but the footprint stays the same? I think the key is the footprint will stay the same. Right? Explain that enough, you think?
And I agree with what you're saying because 10 years ago, a particular panel the size of this table, now 10 years later, a company probably can make twice as much power.
Yeah, right.
Or more.
So.
And be built at a lower cost.
So I think, do we need to make a provision, though, that if the panels are replaced, that they comply with all other aspects of the regulations, like glare and whatever else?
Oh, yeah, I think the provisions of the conditional use permit would still be in place and the regulations, you know, just because they're changing out and making something bigger or smaller and, you know, increasing or different.
Which may reflect something differently, so it might, you know, alter the glare issue.
Right. Yeah, that doesn't mean that, okay, we're, technology's changing, so therefore we're going the same footprint, so now we can just disregard the rest of the regulations. Now, they still have to comply with the regulations, but I think the way I have it right now, we could potentially be very busy if technology changes and.
No, I have no problem with doing what you're proposing, but I think we'd also ought to add a provision that, you know, should the panels be released, excuse me, replaced, that, you know, the replacement panels are, you know, required to comply with all aspects of the conditional use permit and the regulations.
And we could put some language in there.
Something like that, just kind of reinforce it.
Right. Yeah, we can certainly do that. So that was something. Reading through it again, I don't think, it was my intent, but I don't think what my intent was matches what's on paper. And so if the board doesn't see a concern, then figure out the wording and I'll move forward with some different wording, yeah, and bring it back when that gets through.
I'm not sure I like the word footprint, but we all understand what we're talking about when we say footprint.
Yeah.
What we're really talking about is keep it in the same footprint.
Or site plan.
And I would have no objection to say within no more than 5% bigger footprint or something of that sort of thing.
That's a different subject.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different subject.
This kind of does read 5%. I think it was meant to read 5% of the footprint, but yet it could mean 5% of the number of panels, which is the subject we just talked about. So if you wanted to have a provision where you could enlarge it 5% of the footprint, anything larger than that goes through something else, then that's fine, but that's a separate subject than, you know, the panel number within the same footprint that was on the site plan that was, you know, that they're approved to put the panels on.
Yes, I think there would be an expectation from the people we notify that the property will be developed a certain way. Now, we're not saying that they can move the panels elsewhere, but we're saying wherever that footprint is or wherever the site plan shows they are, they are allowed. I'm saying footprint, like the site plan. The site plan shows panels in this area, then as long as that does not change from the approved conditional use permit, if technology changes to allow more, then it should be allowed to do that.
I've got some copy of the Douglas County Kansas regs. I don't know if you've seen those or not.
I've looked at a little bit.
They have a provision in there on size.
Yeah.
Where they define, you know, what the, you know, define what they mean by size, and basically it's the square footage of the panels in their most horizontal position, you know. So if you have multiple areas of those, and they have these here, and these here, and these here, and you basically figure the total square footage of all those panels, and that's the total size you have, you know.
Right.
But, you know, is probably a good approach to it.
Yeah.
So you say, okay, you can put different panels in there, sure, but you can't exceed the footprint size that you had originally.
Without going back through, so. Yeah. What I have here does not commit that.
You might look at that. You've got a copy of those.
Yeah, it's on, so, yeah, so I'll look at what they have and say, I didn't see any other types of regulations, so I think I'll, we'll adjust that and bring that back for board review.
If we approved one and, you know, the site plan was 200,000 square feet of panels, and, you know, they're probably going to tell us, you know, that they're 10 feet by 20 feet, just keep the math easy, but then they come back, you know, 10 years later and technology's improved and they can use smaller ones or maybe now they're, you know, 20 feet by 42 feet or something. Do we care as long as it's the same number of square feet?
That's what the provision I was talking about.
We don't care whether they increase or decrease and improve.
Yeah.
We just care about that the site plan that was approved is the same, and so.
Because really what affects neighbors and other properties in the public is the size of the panels, not how many, whether there's one that's a quarter mile long and pivots all day or whether it's 100. It's.
I guess, you know, in relation to the topic of size, do we want to look at making any limitations on total size of a solar system, like 1,000 acres?
It's board decision if you want to do that. I don't know.
That's what I'm throwing at. I mean, that's a consideration. I know I've seen regs that do that.
I've seen some too that.
That, you know, say, okay, you know, you're taking good farmland or whatever out of production and, you know, yada, 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 you know, in respect to that, we're going to limit the size of these to like 1,000 acres.
Right. I've seen that too. I think that's something this board can think about for next month or, you know, or if you want.
Because that's something, so we can, even if we don't include it in these regs, we can still make that a stipulation during the conditional.
I think I'd rather see it in the regs.
Just want to.
Let's the applicant know how big of an installation they can put in there.
Yeah.
So that's something, just, you know, throw that out for consideration. Do we want to put any kind of a limitation on the actual size, or do you want to say, yeah, put in 5,000 acres of solar panels if you want?
Allow 5,000 acres.
Now, do you want to be looking at something like that in our county?
Do we have a regulation on the type of soils to be used, like, so that we would be more apt to use our less productive acreage than our more productive acreage?
No, no, we don't have any regulations on that.
Nothing current like that.
Yeah, would that be?
That's what we're trying to do here is develop regulations.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think what you, I respect what you're proposing, but I don't think the solar companies are going to really like it because they want to put them where they want to put them and they want to try to get all these contiguous acres, you know.
We've got about four minutes or so before we would reconvene for the case. Mr. Baman has showed up, so. One other thing, maybe before we do that, right quick, Steve had talked about, you know, putting in the regulations, the approval process, and that is under number three now. You can kind of see what I had put in there. I would really just point out to the board that the approval process for a conditional use permit is going to be the same as any other type of conditional use permit, and that's found in Article 20 of our zoning regulations. You know, I know Steve thought maybe just to reinforce it, here's what we should put in there so people kind of know that approval process. And then in letter D, I said in there with the county commissioner approval, the conditional use permit application, the county commissioners and the applicant will also enter into a development agreement outlining the contents found in 25110. That statement is also found elsewhere in the article, so I don't know if we wanted to add that again in there or eliminate that.
I think we'd leave it where it's at. Kind of falls in play, here's the hoops you got to jump through. I mean, you know.
So I guess, right, my thought is I don't think we need it. I don't think we need to be adding words into an article of the regulations that are found elsewhere in the regulations. I understand Steve's point about, you know, maybe reinforcing, but to me, less words is better, but really what I would look for from this board here is a consensus to leave it in or remove it or make changes within there if you see other things that need to be done. But that's the basic premise behind a conditional use permit and what an applicant can be expected to go through.
I guess my opinion would be if it's somewhere else, it doesn't need to be here.
Or it doesn't need to be somewhere else, which is the most logical place for it to be, I guess, is what it would be. Where is it shown elsewhere, Mark?
It's in Article 20. You don't have it, you don't have it in that article, but in the zoning regulations itself, it's in under Article 20.
In a separate.
Yeah, okay, so if I didn't make my, so it's not in Article 25.
Okay, I would, I still say it should be in here.
I changed my position now. I'd say as is referenced in so and so.
Yeah.
In other words, just expanded, I say we need this item D as is referenced in such and such and section of the regulations.
Yeah, he noted it also appears in 251092, you know.
Yeah. It's the same, same process as any other conditional use permit that we would go through. There's nothing that's out of the ordinary, and so it's just a matter of, does this board want to leave that in for whatever reason, or do you want to remove it and just say, yeah, it's in Article 20? That's where, if people want to know the process, they go to Article 20, and they'll see it.
Yeah, this way it keeps it all together, and they can see what, in what place, what all the steps are, instead of having to jump back and forth in the regulations. I always hated that when I was trying to research the tax.
The other place that it appears is tucking back conditional use permits in general.
In general.
I would think that's where it should be.
Yep.
I guess I'll reserve opinion for next month.
For a later time? Yeah. Fine. All right, well, I think we can put a pause here.
I've stated both opinions here, so I'll just.
All right. Well, let's put a pause on this.
Do you want to do a motion removed from the table since you tabled it?
I'd like to move to the return, take off the table, case 2023-04, and present it for consideration.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. Case 2023-04, a request by Pat Bannman, applicant Abbott Land Survey Chad Abbott to rezone approximately 4.7 acres of land from R1 rural residential district to AG agricultural district for the purpose of creating a 40-acre parcel of land to construct a single-family dwelling. Parcel's located at the southwest corner of East Longview Road and South Woodbury Road. The address of the property is 14813 East Longview Road. You've got to read this, deals. Nobody goes. All right. The Kansas Supreme Court has defined a rezone or a conditional use permit hearing as a quasi-judicial function. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the planning commission in an orderly manner, the planning commission will follow the fact-finding procedure which is outlined on the handout on each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, the recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the planning commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written requests for additional public comment or documents based only on valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based upon due information which has become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this county commission policy, a public hearing is considered incomplete only if the planning commission failed to follow its procedural guidelines, which resulted in a denial of due process to the party of interest, or if the planning commission failed to allow an interested party an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of county commission policy, new information shall pertain only to germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing, or which was unknown or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study completed after the public commission recommendation. The planning commission recommendation to the county commissioners will be accompanied by a summary of proceedings before the planning commission at its public hearing, along with the report and recommendations of the county planner. Letters, informal petitions, and other information constitute, constituting the record of proceedings provided to the planning commission before and during the public hearing. If the planning commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case will be presented to the county commission at their next available meeting after the protest period expires. Contact planning staff or visit the website for county commissioner agenda files. Any party who wishes to require the county commission to decide this case by a supermajority vote may file a protest, protest petition pursuant to KSA 12-757 at the office of the Reno County Clerk, 125 West Fifth Avenue, Hutchinson, Kansas, within 14 days following the decision by the planning commission. The form is on the Reno County website, Planning Department webpage. I now formally open the planning public hearing case number 2023-04. The applicant present?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, my, my hope is to build a home.
Did you give us your name?
Oh, sorry, my name is Pat Bannman. Hello. And, yeah, so my hope is to re annexed that, that of land for my mom who lives on the other side of the property, and then rezone it, so you'll have enough land to get a build permit to build a home. That's my hope.
One quick question. The, I think the information we've got, we're showing like 40 acres, and that includes the 4.7 acres. That's total of 40 acres, including that parcel.
That's right.
But not including that other tract, R1, which is tract two up there. That's where the other house is now.
No, so the, yes, that's absolutely right. Okay. No, that's all I have.
That's it. All right. Okay, Mark. Give us the staff report.
So this is a request to rezone approximately 4.7 acres. You're located way down the eastern part of the county at Longview and Woodbury. On the other side of Woodbury is Harvey County. I won't go over my entire report here. Everybody in the audience and at the desk has received it, so I'll just let my report stand on its own there, but I will just talk a little bit and try to address some of the confusion maybe a little bit here. So, within blue, identified as parcel number two was at one time approximately 10-acre home site owned by Mr. Bannman's family here, and it was 10 acres around here. Parcel three is a parcel that was less than 40 acres, and through a series of, of parcel adjustments here, it got less than 40 acres due to, like, parcel number four, which used to also be in the family. And so when he approached me about building a house out there, our agricultural district requires the 40-acre minimum, or you can do the agricultural lot split, you know, as well. This parcel was short. Luckily here, we have a situation where that's about, about a 10-acre site. And so what had happened prior to this public hearing is Mr. Bannman had done a lot split application and purchased approximately 4.7 acres of land on the backside of his relations' property there. It still doesn't give us the 40-acre minimum agricultural to construct a house, and so that land was purchased. We need to rezone it, and then that land has since been added to the farm ground by deed. And so once we would potentially rezone this to the agricultural district, now we have a conforming parcel of ground that would be eligible for a zoning permit for a brand-new house. Not shown on that map, I will say that the entire property is in the floodplain for your information. Mr. Bannman has applied for and received approval of a permit in order to use Phil Dirk to build a pad for his new home. I believe the new home is going to be located on the west side of the property. Kind of the drawing would be like where the number three really is on, on your screen, you know, right there. He's going to be building way back in on the property, but it is all in the floodplain, so we'll have to comply with our floodplain regulations. So, in essence, that's what we are up against. Rezones, for, for those of you who've never been through a rezone, they are almost exactly similar, that we have the same process as far as a conditional use permit. The one thing I would add is that rezones have different factors that this board must consider when making a recommendation. Those factors are listed in, in your report. You'll notice there are a little bit more factors than there are under the conditional use permit, but the same process applies to where you have to consider those factors when making a recommendation. The other thing that I would note for the board is the fact that with a rezone, you cannot attach conditions of approval similar to what you can do with a conditional use permit. So you either say, yes, it's appropriate to rezone that property from R1 to AG, or no, it is not appropriate to rezone it from R1 to the agricultural district. Based off those factors, you cannot condition, say, well, we'll approve this rezone subject to the applicant doing whatever you would decide. It's either yes, you know, or it's no. And so the back of my report, you'll see that I recommended approval of this request to rezone the property is based off of the 10 factors that you see listed in my report. You did send letters to eight different people, including the people that you see listed on the right-hand side over there in Harvey County. That list was provided to me by the applicant's surveyor, and so I sent notices to those people. Did not receive any comments back from anybody. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I do ask about the pictures, if you're interested in it. This is a copy of the survey that you have in your packet, again, showing the backside of that property being purchased by Mr. Bannman and then added to his parcel for a grand total of 40 acres. Aerial photo, you can see it's very, very sparsely populated out there. That is the, the property in question. Part of that property that will be rezoned is actually trees right now. Pictures on the side, this was taken in 2021. This is looking at the area proposed to rezone. Again, it's out in the middle of the, of the 40 acres, so it's kind of hard to get a good close-up picture, but that's the area you're looking at. Again, mainly farm ground out there. This is on the north side, again, farm ground, so nothing too, too exciting here. This image is from 2020, 2007, excuse me, but again, it's farm ground over on the Harvey County side, so that's about all I have to show the board in case you haven't got a chance to go out to the property area.
Clarification, I guess. Okay, so originally, you did a lot split to create that parcel, that 4.7-acre parcel, is that correct?
We did a lot split, yes, because it's own.
No, we're undoing the lot split.
Nope.
No.
Nope.
We're recombining it with a different parcel.
We're decreasing the size of the lots.
No, does your, well, what, I'm just curious, because, okay, he's got 40 acres now, so, but he's done one lot split, so he would not be able to have a future lot split. Is that correct?
No.
No.
No, it's not correct. No, it's not correct. So, the lot split occurred on parcel two, okay?
Oh, okay.
So parcel two used to be a 10-acre site. That person, his mother, I believe, if I'm wrong, applied for a lot split, and so we approved that lot split. That parcel now is not eligible for another split.
So she did a lot split.
She did the lot split, sold him.
Create second lot.
Well, created a second lot that doesn't meet our, our regulations, okay?
Okay.
Because it doesn't have frontage, and so that land is now being sold to him. It's in his name right now. However, we still don't have 40 acres of land zone agricultural, so that's why we're rezoning the backside. If it was the same zoning district, then again, we would not be here tonight, and.
I'm just trying to clarify in my mind what happened.
If you really technically were saying lot split, it was actually a boundary adjustment. Lot splits are procedures that are put in place to be able to create a new building site. This was technically just a boundary adjustment because it doesn't have frontage, okay? So then that land is being added to his, his agricultural land. If this is all said and done, then we'll eventually have one 40-acre piece of ground zone agricultural. That ground will be 5.3 acres, I believe. Parcel two will be now 5.3.
All right. Clarify. Good.
I forgot to ask if any planning commission members had outside contacts regarding this case, okay?
No.
Any planning commissioners have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Okay. Get back to the script here. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to?
Any more questions from me?
Any more questions with Mark?
You've got us confused enough.
I think for the sake of reading that, I think the chairman could just note that there is nobody present in the audience except for the, the applicant, and you could forego public comment. We'll just note for the record that nobody's in the audience to speak for or against this proposal.
Okay. Done. All right. Does the applicant wish to rebut any statements made?
No.
Does the staff wish to rebut any statements made?
No, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman.
We've got two minutes.
I appreciate the consideration, but no, thank you.
Okay, does the commission have any further questions of applicant or staff? All right. Public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of a rezone or a conditional use permit must be based on the factors that are listed in the staff report and found on the audience chairs. This is the time the planning commission discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Any further discussion or questions by the planning commission? If not, the chairman will entertain a motion in this case.
Remove the case number 23, or 2023-04, a request by Pat Bannman requesting a rezone from Reno County zoning regulations, the 4.7 acres of land from R1 rural residential district to AG agricultural district be approved based on the 10 factors listed in the staff report and as heard at this public hearing.
Okay. Mark, would you call the roll, please?
Swerfayer?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you for your patience, everybody. I apologize for being late.
No problem.
Back to the commercial, Soler. Okay. Can someone, they get approved for so many square feet of panels, can they do part of that at one time and, and part of it at a later time?
Phase one, phase two type thing?
Two years' construction.
Well, they're creating a site plan, so.
Okay. So within two years, they got to fill it with solar panels?
Why, are you, are you concerned, like, maybe there'd be like a five-year gap or so between one phase and another?
Yeah, uh-huh.
I think, I think, you know, the regulations, I don't recall seeing that in the regulations. I know we had some of that in wind, I think, but developers' agreement would probably drive some of that.
Okay.
Whether, like what Don said, I mean, you know, they, they have an approved site plan, and so they'd be able to go there. I think probably the developers' agreement would address timelines on when we could expect to see this built out, and if the, if the applicant, for some reason, was going to do one, one area one year, and then have another area in a second year, or another area in three years, that would probably just be something that would be addressed through, through the developers' agreement. Because your conditional use permit would still stand, just like any conditional use permit, unless this board would recommend some type of timeline with it, you know, like, and this board's never done that in the past, but like with conditional use permits, you could say that you're approved for this land use, but you must pull a zoning permit for this project within two years, or, or come back for another review, or, or the conditional use is null and void. I mean, you do have that authority, but you've never really enforced or enacted that type of, of time restraint on somebody.
Pros or cons? I mean, if you drag it out over like three years, then you've got basically construction going on in that area over a three-year period instead of a one-year period.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, everything's a lot more disturbed and-
It could be, yeah. You know, the other concern could potentially be, I think, on my end, would be if something happens and the regulations change. Yeah, we've got these regulations, then we got an approved conditional use permit, and if something happens and we change the regulations now, you might have some concern that the area that wasn't built out doesn't comply with the new set of regulations.
Yeah, we already issued a CP on it, it's grandfathered in.
It just was a thing where it might create some animosity or whatever. If something doesn't meet it well, that was approved under another set of regulations. You know, we just had that hearing tonight where that situation occurred, so that would be the-
Maybe if they're going to do it, they ought to, you know, build it out, you know, in a reasonable period of time.
Yeah, I think that would be probably more of a developers' agreement type thing. And certainly, you could recommend it as part of a condition under the conditional use permit if you felt you needed to.
Now, I know we have a listing of things that are covered by the development agreement, like one of them, like timeline.
I think timelines are in there.
25-109 is the two-year, and then they get a one-year extension.
I thought it was in there, yeah. There you go, Garth, now.
So that's the same as wind?
Yeah. See, that was carried over from wind, so I probably had it.
Two years to get it done.
They have two years, and if for some reason they can't get it done in two years, then they can go to the county commission and get a one-year extension if they explain why they need another year, so.
I'm good with that.
Okay. I lost my sheet comparative.
25-4, I think.
25-3, I didn't have anything else on 25-3, and then 25-4. Let's see, is that a comment by you, Steve, I think? What I did under letter C is I added solar panels, and that's under the category of contents of a development plan and the plan of operation. We originally said it gives the location of buildings and structures related to the project. I think the board wanted some clarification, or that also means the location of the solar panels, so I added that in there, if that's okay. On 25-5, under number three, here's where we changed a couple of words from should to shall. The document shall state that wildlife parks has been contacted. The report shall include but not be linked to information regarding, and then we talk about wildlife habitats, birds, flora, fauna, that type of stuff. And so I think your previous document probably said should, and that kind of leads into question, well, do they have to or not? So we changed that to shall, or they will, will do that. That's something we caught before we, I didn't do a check on those words, and we, that's what we looked at, and we changed those. Again, on next page, on 25-6, again, changed some shoulds to shows, and so the document submitted shall address that the disturbed area will be reseated, covered by rock. I know, Steve, you had some questions and comments on that previously. The next paragraph there, the vegetation plan shall describe how the ground beneath the solar panels will be restored to a cover suitable to the owner. Nothing on 25-7, 25-8. Go all the way to page 25-9, and this gets to Steve's comments regarding his letter E and the document that he submitted to us last month. We added the word drainage under the soil erosion sediment control stormwater, so we say that the applicant shall develop a soil erosion drainage sediment control and stormwater runoff plan. Nothing on 25-10. We move to 25-11 here. Part of agreements and requirements here. We added traffic management plan, and we also added a dust control plan for township roads and construction areas within the solar project. It might be a good time to kind of talk a little bit about your comments from last month, Steve, on your letter E, because you had several things listed here. The board has that document, but in there, Steve had mentioned, in addition to the requirements in section 22-106D, the following items shall be required, reviewed, and approved by the director of public works, the director of planning zoning, which I don't know who that is, it's not me, but unless you give me a promotion, right?
I do. We gave you a promotion.
Yeah, and the county commission. And so in the document here, Steve, you listed road usage and repair agreement, and I think that's covered under the current developers' agreement, okay? You say traffic management plan, and so that was placed under the road agreement documentation. You talk about drainage plans, we've added that, as you saw previously on that previous page. You also mentioned stormwater and erosion control plan. That was found under 25-108 and 25-107. So I didn't know if you, if you wanted something more than that, what we had, or where you're going with that.
Basically, what my concern is on the drainage, that whole issue, is, you know, my understanding is that lands are being leased up for a solar project along a parallel road out toward Lake Cheney. You know, and possibly some of the land is either really close to or includes some of Lake Cheney watershed district and another watershed district, you know. You know, and I also heard of other information of a lawsuit that was brought against a solar company by a landowner because the solar panels contaminated basically their land and their lake, private lake they had. They got $135 million judgment against the solar company. And, you know, that's something I think we need to be cognizant of, you know, with the relationship of some of this land and Cheney Lake, which also provides Wichita's water for a good chunk of it, you know, we, you know, and I'm still trying to find out exactly what the contamination resulted from, you know, pesticides probably.
Right.
Somebody had mentioned to me, you know, it's, you know, the solutions they use to clean the panel, the runoff, this type of stuff that's getting down and, you know, flowing and, you know, going down into ground. So, I mean, we need to try to figure out where to try to address those kind of environmental issues, whether it's here or, you know, somewhere else, so that there, you know, we can try to do whatever we possibly can to minimize any potential environmental issues resulting from the solar site, the use of whatever chemicals they're using for cleaning things, for, you know, weed control, whatever else, you know, whether it can go into, you know, what are the, you know, what kind of material do they put on the panel? It was just gravel that they're going to go in there with, you know, vegetation color and kill everything. You know, if they go in there with a grass of some kind, well, that can help, you know, mediate the pollution thing, give it a filter and whatnot, but of course, grass is more flammable than gravel is. So, you know, I don't know, but those are some of my concerns that, you know, I still haven't quite figured out yet.
Okay. And that's why I'm curious where you were coming from on that, and so.
So, you know, it's just whatever we can do to try to, you know, minimize any environmental impact to, you know, the ground and neighboring adjoining properties and whatnot, you know, from the installation.
Okay. So the other things you had in there was the visual buffer plan, vegetation, landscape plan, setback plan, and my notes, I think I've had those covered under 25-108 and 25-106, and so is there something that the board wants expanded upon on that? Or 25-108, number 1, 1D, I think is what it was? Well, you know-
At the top of page 25-7.
You know, with that email I sent you, and when I sent you this other stuff, you know, I had some other thoughts on setbacks, of course.
Yes.
You know, I think what we're, we have in the proposed regs are not enough. I think they're too close. I would like to see more of the, what did I tell you? So I don't-
And I, honestly, I haven't had a chance to look at it too closely and-
Where you say from road right away in all property lines, you have 50 feet, I would like to see that go to 100. That's in, what, on 25-7, item 2A.
Right.
And then on 2B, you say 100 feet from a participating or non-participating landowner's principal building, you know, I would like to see that increased to 500 feet.
Is that from a, what?
From the building.
From the participating or non-participating?
Or should we just eliminate?
From a non-participating, you can say non-participating building, yes. Well, that's the principal building. Yeah, I guess you could say 500 feet from either, and then they have the right to waive that requirement if they want. So if you have a non-participating person and he doesn't want those solar panels 100 feet from him, from his house, you know, then you say, no, I'm not going to agree to this, you know, whereas if the guy who's participating landlord is like, well, yeah, I'm getting money out of this, I don't care, so give him the right to waive that requirement.
Well, we use the waiver thing a lot in wind. I don't, honestly, I just don't like the waivers. I'd rather try and come up with a number that we believe is acceptable and get away from people waiving this and waiving that, because that gets pretty cumbersome and hard to track and say, okay, yeah, does the property owner have, you know, this waiver on file? And then, you know, so if it's at all possible, I'd like to try and avoid the waiver situation.
Just 500 feet straight.
Well, I mean, whatever the number is, I would rather do that than rather than letting people waive this and waive.
Well, I'm just looking, say, for the non-participating person, he's not participating for a reason, like, you know, he doesn't want it on his land, and as such, I'm sure he doesn't want it 100 feet from his house, too, you know, which, you know, depending on where his house is permitted, you know, it could be a lot closer to his property line. So, you know.
I may be thinking about wrong, but it looks like that regulation would be for the non-participating, because the participating, they're going to, they have a say with the developer, the non-participating is the one that doesn't have the say, so that regulation needs to be for the non-participating.
You change that from a non-participating landowner's principal building, you know. You know, the participating landowner, they can negotiate that in their lease.
So you just want to add another letter in there?
Well, no, what I'm saying is on item 2B.
Yeah.
Where it says 100 feet from a participating or non-participating landowner's principal building, okay, I would like to change that to 500 feet and then delete the word participating or, and just say from a non-participating landowner's principal building, make it 500 feet, which I don't think is unreasonable.
Thoughts or consensus? I mean, I can, you know, nothing's in store, I mean, I can put it in there like that, and you can think about it later, or is there any other?
Well, I'm just trying to think, you know, if there was a non-participant on all four sides, then the, you know, you shrunk the working area by 500 feet on each side. I can't get in my mind how much space that actually is. If it's 1,000 acres, it's not much.
No, no, and I mean, you know, most of these commercial systems are going to be at least 1,000 acres or more, you know, that's why my earlier question is, do we want to limit the size, you know? So I don't think 500 feet, you know, and plus, it's only going to be from their principal building, so how many principal buildings are you going to be dealing with in the footprint of a solar system? Not that many, I'm guessing.
I'm having a hard time visualizing 500 feet, not a unit of major area.
Well, football field, 300 feet.
So it's a little more than that, isn't it?
So it'd be one and a half football fields plus 50 yards, you know. Fairly decent visual buffer from the non-participating owner.
Then who's responsible for main? I suppose the developer has to maintain that 500-foot strip.
Well, no, it's just the panels can't be located within 500 feet of the principal building, you know.
Yeah, no, but you've now created 500 feet of vegetation or?
Well, not necessarily, I mean, it can be, it can be crop land, you know, it could be the guy's backyard, it could be, you know, buffer zone of the solar farm where they have their fence and their, you know, earth and mound to protect it or vegetation.
Not 500 from the property line, but 500-
Not 500 from the residence, from the residence.
If the residence is 400 feet off their property line, then they'd only have to be 100 feet.
They'd only have to be 100 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
So if it's at the residence, 500 feet from the property line, then they can bill it right up to the property line, more or less, except if you've got-
Except you've already got-
Except you've already got a setback there of 100 feet, so.
I have driven over by the facility over here, and I believe from the road, it's over 5, over 100 feet to the fence.
Do which one are you talking about?
The one that's, oh, so I'm turning around here.
West side of Hutch?
Just out here on the highway.
Oh, okay.
You can't see it from the highway, but you could turn off on the road and go down there and-
South of the gas plant.
Yeah. I think the fence is at least 100 feet from the road line. I know I drove in there to just kind of get out of my vehicle and kind of gawk around, and there was lots of room for me to drive in and park and get out and, and, yeah.
So, you know, I guess what I was just trying to do is, you know, look out for the other guy, the guy who doesn't, you know, is not, doesn't want the solar panels on his property, and he doesn't want them 100 feet from his house either, I'm sure. So trying to, you know, make, give a reasonable buffer there.
Now, there are houses on the other side of that, aren't there? I wonder how far the principal building is from the panels on that one.
I wonder how far the principal building is from the panels on that one? You have to pull out a map when I get home.
Yeah, I didn't look at that. No regulations, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just, yeah, trying to visualize what, how far away.
So I.
I've.
Yeah.
I think I'm, I'm going to have to chew on that one a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
I realize it's my, my words here, but I don't have a definition of principal building, both in the zoning regs or in this article. And so, what's your definition of principal building? I mean.
To me, a principal building would be a house.
It's the, it's a resident.
Yeah.
We have that in.
I think in the wind rigs, we said, maybe we need to change the verbiage on that.
Not in my definitions, not in Article One. So, so you want to use the wind definition or?
Yeah, make it principal residence, yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's, I'm just saying, we say that, but what does that mean? So you use that definition?
Right.
Does the appraiser's office identify a primary building or primary residence in their data?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you if there's scenarios where they would identify.
Yeah, I was trying to think, because like on our, you know, we got our house and then garage and machinery buildings. I was trying to remember if one's defined as a primary.
No, they're, they're defined as residence.
They're defined as what they are, aren't they? They're the one that's a number one, yeah. The last two in that, if we're a little bit done, you talked about the site plan and also a panel location plan. And so, the site plan is actually under Article eight.
Okay.
And it's also in 25-106. And the panel location, I added that to 25-106, one C. 106, I think that's back where it was highlighted, panels.
And solar panels, yeah.
So I did that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments before maybe I move on? Well, here's where I, I have some concerns, Steve, with what you wrote a little bit. I don't have a concern about what you're wanting, but it's just like, how, how is that enforced? So the first one here, you talked about a, a solar system shall at no time create glare on any non-participating property line, structure, or right of way. And so, how am I going to, how am I or the regulations going to enforce glare? What is glare? Because I guarantee you, I could go on your property and I could have glare off of your car mirror or your tint shed.
Well, glare, we're talking about glare off the panels.
But what is that? I mean, I mean, how, how do I, how do I define that? I mean, that's going to be hard, that's going to be, I think, that's going to be hard regardless of what we ever come up with a definition to enforce something like that. Because you can look across the street at anything and see glare. And so, I think.
I don't know how I had that worded, what, you know, basically, I think what I was looking at was that the solar panels should be constructed to minimize glare or reflection onto adjacent properties and roadways and not interfere with, with traffic or air traffic or create safety hazards.
Yeah.
So it's not, you know, you're not saying none, you're saying it should be constructed to minimize the amount of glare projected to those instances.
Okay, in my shoes, you know, what does that mean? Because you're going to come to me and you're going to say, well, these panels across the street are glaring. And I'm going to look at that and like, how do we minimize that so they're not glaring to me? I mean, so that, that's where I.
I want something more definitive, I know.
I think we need it. I, I need it because I'm going to, I'm going to have to defend this.
That's vague.
Yeah. And so I.
Well, no, we have.
It's a good thought, but it's, it's like, how do I defend it?
It looks like, you know, when you got a panel that's, that's moving to stay in line with the sun and then you got the sun going, moving north in the summer and south in the winter, there's always going to be glare somewhere.
Yeah.
In, in some direction.
Well, isn't this taking, in section 25-107, section six, we're already requesting an analysis report, so. And then if any glare is predicted, we're, they have to, shall describe their mitigation to address that. Do we need anything beyond that, I guess? Is my question. You know, because like, you think back again, you know, the wind, where we, we said that the towers had to be white or beige, not painted polka dots. You know, if you said something where, you know, the mounting system of the, of the solar had to be black in color. Okay, that's something that I can defend and say, yeah, you got to make them black. You know, to say glare.
I see, I know what you're, I see.
Yeah.
I see your point.
Does the solar glare hazard analysis quantify that?
I guess what I was trying to do was to, you know, I think that helps.
Seems like that's going to be.
I'll think about that one a little more, because I'm not, you know, I fully understand Mark's point. That it's not definitive. It's not something that's easily, you know, enforced.
Yeah. I understand where you're coming from, I get it.
Yeah, I was trying to say, I don't want, you know, glare shining in the adjacent landowner's house or the, on their road or on coming traffic, stuff like that. So, and not all these panels move. A lot of them, I think, are stationary.
Could be, yeah.
You know, or else they just, they rotate this way and they don't, or north or south. I'm not sure anymore, you know. Big ones I've seen out in Colorado, they're more fixed.
Your, your next one talks about noise generating equipment setback. Equipment that could create objectionable sounds during normal operations shall be located as far as practically possible away from a non-participating dwelling. So here again, saying, same concept under.
Yeah.
Well, I think appreciate what you're saying.
I think what the sheet I just sent you here the other day.
You have further.
Addresses noise.
Okay.
In a little more, a different manner, so to speak. Because as I understand, these solar panels do put off noise.
Sure.
With the humming noise that's cut off. Then you have all the inverters and other equipment they have that, that puts off noise and this kind of stuff. So, you know, that, it's, it's a concern if you live close to one, that you're going to have some type of noise. And I think you've all got the head, I set Mark a couple of things. One was on battery storage and the other was on noise. And this is just something I copied out of another county's regulations, basically. In setting a 60 decibel level 500 feet from the existing residence.
Yeah, it's.
And you want that from the property line, too?
From the residence.
Noise from the.
Says measure to have property line or.
Measured at the property line or 500 feet from an existing residence.
So.
Whichever, I guess you would say. Whichever is less.
Okay.
The property line could be a thousand foot away.
Yeah, yeah.
Or a mile away.
I'll look at what you sent this week.
Yeah.
And see.
You know, I mean, we did, you know.
These are ideas.
Yep. I'm just throwing things out that I think we need to address. And, you know, I'm not saying this is the verbiage we need to use. I mean, it's a thought that, okay, this is something we need to somehow fit into the regs somehow to make a provision for it. But, you know, how we go about that, I'm, I'm still working this out, so.
Okay, yeah, and I appreciate, I forget, that's, these are just thoughts, you know, they were meant to be the exact wording.
But right now, I think that the version of reg we have definitely addresses noise anywhere.
So if we put that in there and then it's later discussed, you would want it measured from the property line or 500 foot from the existing residence, whichever is.
Yeah, there I got to, I got to think about, I mean.
Because the property line is.
I mean, if it's property line, I mean, you know. Still got to think about that one, Don, I'm not sure.
Well, everybody needs to think about that one.
Yeah.
You talk about employee parking along county roads. Well, my regulations wouldn't address county roads or any road, they stop, you know, and that. But that would be more of a sheriff's responsibility because you can't park on county roads.
Okay.
Township roads anyway, unless you're broke down, you know, something like that.
Well, just like during a construction period where you have a lot of workers in there that come in and they're going to, if they all park along the roads.
I get it.
There could be a driving hazard.
Yep, and that should be addressed by, like, sheriff or whatever like that.
Well, should be addressed in a developer's agreement.
And, and the sheriff and the developer's agreement, it'd be in there.
Stick that as a development agreement item.
Dust control was your next sentence here. Again, I think that would be a developer's agreement thing under the road section where we would address anything to where.
Well, you got road and site.
Yeah.
Because construction is going to be the main issue on dust there.
Just for clarification, well, you know, you said gravel, county road, county doesn't have any gravel roads, it's township. But I know what you meant.
Well, we know, sand roads.
You talk about damage to waterways, public regulated drains, ditches, private mutual drains. Again, I thought developers' agreement, where we would address that. They would have their drainage plans reviewed by us, but all that, the damage and stuff, that would be addressed. Something on, and who does that, our right to, you know, contract with engineers to review stuff, you know, that type of stuff. Damage to roads, again, damage to roads, again, I think developers' agreement. As-built drawings. The, the owner of the solar farm shall submit as-built drawings upon completion of construction of all development on the site to the satisfaction of, of Public Works and the County Commission. We're going to have a site plan and it would have to be developed according to that.
Yeah.
And so, what, you want another plan that would show the same thing or?
Basically, or so the final product show where the exact, you know, because if they're.
They can't deviate from that.
Can't change it. But they can go build within that site plan. So say if you have the site plan here, well, we want to put these panels like 50 feet inside of the, where we thought we were, we're going to do that.
Well, the plan shows exactly where they go.
Yeah, yeah, the plan would, they would have to develop it exactly how the plan would, would show.
At those locations.
Right.
So even though we have a 40-acre site and they're going to have them in one corner of that site, they're not going to be able to take 20 of them and flip them somewhere else with them, okay? Your last thing was talking about fees and I think fee schedule and stuff would be the agreement that we would have through the developers, agreement where we would address fees now.
That's, that's something I think we talked about briefly last month, was that, you know, do we want to charge an application fee for the CUP? And that's not a development agreement thing, that's more of a policy and procedure thing.
Yeah, and that's something we're looking at internally with, with fees and stuff. But I think we would do something similar to wind where we would have a separate agreement between the county and the developer to reimburse us for any unusual.
Well, yeah, but all I'm saying is just for, for regular, normal application processing, it takes a lot of your time. And that's not unusual or, you know, or unordinary expenses. But, you know, if they have to pay, you know, $2,500 application fee to help reimburse the county for staff time in processing that, there's something wrong with that. Trying to find you some money?
I know, I hear you, I hear you. I think that concluded your comments from last month, Steve, and what I did and didn't do. If we go back to the, the regulation handout, then the next thing was on 25-12 to show you kind of where some of that stuff went. So we said, on letter E, we said you got to talk about a reseeding or restoration of disturbed areas. We just had reseeding as previously. And then, one of the things you talked about, Steve, was the, the damage reimbursement plan.
Yes.
And so, that should have been in your copy that I emailed you. So was there any comments or, or consensus for the board that that's okay? Leave that in, remove it, something different? Or think about it for another month, you know?
Of course, I proposed it, so I'm going to be in agreement with it.
With that?
I proposed it, so I'm in agreement with it.
I, I would hope so, yeah. So it, it appears it's full of mayes and no shalls, so, I mean.
Well, that's because Don and Mark haven't gone through, that he changed things to shall.
Because as it reads now, it looks like you can say, sure, I'll fix it, and then that's it.
Yeah. Well, I, I agree there, I think, is the point, those should be.
Well, this is under, this is again, under the developers' agreement. We don't want to block.
We're just suggesting to.
We're just suggesting at this point, this isn't.
Yes, the development agreement would change that from may to shall.
Yes.
Yes.
We're just, we're just suggesting to the county commissioners that they discuss that, enter, enter into an agreement that would discuss the damage reimbursement. Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to dictate to them that they should do something. They may decide that's not important for, for whatever reason, they don't want to do that, so. So that's all the changes from, from last month. Like I said, we did a few shouts and shoulds on there. Steve had sent me another listing of, of stuff to look at this week and I hadn't had a chance to, to go through that yet, so.
Yeah, I mean, what, basically what I've sent Mark here the other day.
I have, I just haven't found it.
Yeah, I've got it on here on my phone. Basically, the first thing I've got a question about would be on page 25 dash one, 25-101, two. Uh, not two.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, two. Basically says, these guidelines do not apply to a private solar energy system which is structurally mattered to the roof of a building or structurally mattered to the ground on the same part of the residential dwelling or their building. Why don't we just shorten that and say these guidelines do not apply to a private solar energy system? Because we do define what a private solar energy system is. Just cut out some of the verbiage on that.
I found your email, I didn't have the attachment, you haven't found that yet, but.
Yeah. So we can just shorten that and just, just, I think, average energy system, period, and then get rid of the rest of that sentence.
I still have some heartburn about the private installs. I think of these scenarios of creating people out there that will attempt to cover their property in panels and what that would be in a place like Blue Spruce or, you know, not a rural area, but closer in. And it seems like we just have an open door there.
Or like your, your neck of the woods where there's a lot of parcels and bigger than they could just cower on.
Yeah. I mean, you're going to get the oddball who might, occasional oddball who might try something like that. But, you know, you've got several things. One is, you know, most people take, you know, most people take pride in their property, so they don't want to. And, I mean, most do. I didn't say everybody in ours, you know. And, you know, so, I mean, they're not going to fill up their whole yard with solar panels. Secondly, you know, would they be creating excess energy such that, you know, they can't use it all? So they're spending money for something they can't use and the utility buyback program is ridiculous. So you're not going to be profiteering from that.
That's the way it is now, but there's a lot of pressure that is in the works to change that.
Well, of course, it used to be, a few years, seven, eight years ago, it was a lot better. better then.
Right.
You know, and then they changed it to kind of disincentivize people from doing this.
So anyway, I just see these scenarios in my mind and think of my neighbors or me on a creative day, you know, how I could get the most number of panels on my property.
Maybe run a line over to my neighbor and sell electricity on the side.
Well, now that, that's when it crosses the line, right? Like, you run that line to the neighbor?
Yeah, then you're a commercial.
Then you're a commercial system.
Yeah, but, I mean, yeah, I understand your point, but, you know, do we wanna get into regulating private systems? That's what it boils down to, you know.
Yep. Was there something in the wind regs about kilowatt hour generation or something?
Was the size determined what they, was it commercial or not?
Right. How much it put out?
Makes sense to align solar with that concept?
It won't eliminate your issue of how many panels, but, but yeah, that's, that could be an answer.
How many panels or how many kilowatts, you know, I mean...
Yeah, how much it puts out.
But, you know, what if you have a, a large house and a large property and you want, or need more panels, so...
Yeah.
You know, if you say, well, it's, you know, then I guess you have to have a provision come through and get a, a variance, you know, from us to say, I want more panels, you know.
It's gonna be hard to make a regulation based on the number of panels.
Yeah, yeah, or, I mean, even, even wattage, kilowattage, or whatever that they produce, because, you know, everybody's circumstances vary, you know, like, you're just doing a two-bedroom house, or you're doing a six-bedroom house, you know, with a pool and everything else, that you got all this stuff.
Or you might have three electric vehicles.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. You're gonna need a lot of panels then, so...
I think your other sentence is then, in your email to me, we had discussed, we talked about the glare, you gave me an attachment. Let's see, and then you're, then you talked about setbacks, the 50 to 100 and the 100 to 500, so the board heard that discussion.
Yeah, what we did talk about was changing the height limitation from 20 to 15 feet.
Any thoughts, board, on, on changing the height from 20 down to 15?
I think we need to know how big a panel is.
Yeah.
And when they're tracking how high...
How tall it is.
How tall they get, late, early in the day and late in the day. 300, 400 feet away from looking at the road, you don't realize how big they are.
That's something you could get some research on.
Try, yeah.
Heights, standard heights of panels.
Right.
Okay. And, other than that, then I think I, I think Mark gave you all his handout, that I sent him on noise, which we've discussed, and then the battery energy storage systems, you know, which I think we probably should address in, in our regs somewhere.
So is there, is there anything in the copy right now that you want further discussion on, or do I need to just accept that? Not final, obviously, anything like that, but is there anything that you want me to hold out and leave highlights so we remember to discuss further?
I'd like to revisit some of the setbacks next time.
Okay.
I'll agree with that.
All right.
You know, like you said, I, I, you know, I'm gonna try to do some more research this next month on the environmental aspect of, of the solar sys, solar systems, as it relates to avoiding environmental damages and pollution. Cause I think it's, I think it's a critical issue with the sensitive areas we've got fairly close to the land that's currently being leased up.
I'll see what I can find, I'll, I'll get these changes done and try and clean the document up a little bit, and I'll try and replace the one that's on the website right now, so... We haven't had that many changes from the one that's on the web, but it's been a few months, and so I'll, I'll try and get that done here the next few weeks, and then...
And I'll see if I, if I come up with a lot more harebrained ideas, I'll see if I can get them to you a little more...
That goes for anybody else. If you got any other harebrained ideas, use Steve's words, please send them to me. Please send me any comments as you, as you think about it, you know, we had some discussion here mainly on setbacks and height, and I know it's putting you on the spot, but let me know as you think about it, if, if you think that's good or bad or what, and we can talk about it next month.
I gotta look at this, you know, we're, we're going from no regulations to some regulations, so let's try to, try to get them as, as complete and well-thought-out as we can in the first place.
Mr. Chairman, as, as this county commission charged us with the responsibility of doing what we've been doing, I think they'd be really proud of what we have accomplished today.
One thing I'd like to know more about is the battery storage, what, you know, fire hazard, the chemical, chemical hazard, the gas they could...
Yeah, I would think that would be...
Put off, you know, if they catch on fire. I mean, they talk about cars burning, and still you're only talking about their battery that's this big.
Yeah, if you got a whole room full of batteries.
You know, if you got a whole building full of those things and they catch on fire, and they can't even be put out.
Yeah, has a...
You know, I don't, 500 feet's not, you know, five miles may not be far enough.
Yeah, yeah. We know, I haven't had... Fire emergency management, that'd probably be a good...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Bring them in and let them, maybe they can come to our next meeting and, and kind of, you know, give them a heads up and see if they can address that issue, but that worked.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to say something so that everybody hears it. I know that as far as the public coming in to Mark or to staff in here and saying what they would like to say about solar or a developer, I haven't allowed, and won't allow it, but that doesn't mean that, that everybody that has information of any kind for or against, or even developer, they can email Mark, they can write Mark, they can do any of that to give us that information, and then all of that automatically goes to you guys, and then it will help us to answer some of these questions and create regulations. So anybody out there, don't think that they can't say anything until the public hearing. They can email all their concerns or all their questions or all their knowledge into Mark, and then we'll share, and then that'll all be shared with you, and then when we have the public hearing, they'll have a voice. So everybody out there just listening, that, even the developer can do that, and it may help answer some of these questions.
Exactly.
Anything else? That's all for that. That it for tonight. We'll have a couple cases in, in August, we may have some more time to look at this.
Anything else? Any other business? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody wanna stay longer?